All right, we will call the meeting to order of the Hubbard's and Porter Selectment Monday, November 24, 2025 at 6:30, is that 5 or 6?
36.
6:36 PM. We are here to have a hearing on the joint tax classification hearing, tax hearing with the Board of Assessors and a vote on such classification. I would ask those of you who are here, this is more for the videoing of the meeting, that if you're going to speak on behalf of the Board, with the exception, sir, you're already there. If you want, just come up to the podium. That way she can get you on camera as opposed to seeing just your backs. So if you wouldn't mind doing that, I appreciate it. All right, with that in mind, we will open the hearing on the tax classification, and I will turn it over to Stephen Boucher, who will present it to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stephen Boucher from RRG Associates on Leamester. We do the assessing roles in town as an independent contractor on behalf of the Board, and I will be presenting the tax classification this evening. Those that have a packet, page two is the steps in setting the tax rates. One, two, and three determine the property tax levy. We have done that. That is uploaded onto the Department of Revenue state. We have determined assessed valuations, and we've tabulated and broken it down by class, meaning commercial, industrial, residential land and all that. Tonight, steps four, five, and six is going to be up to you to determine if there will be a split in taxes or a single tax rate. Hubbard's has been notorious for a single tax rate. We don't have a lot of commercial industrial property. Therefore, that's why it has maintained the way it has. After this evening, whether there's a vote or not, we will proceed with the Department of Revenue and continue to process that through proper channels. The next page, the top paragraph is the levy. At the bottom of the paragraph, there is a number, 8,765,054. That was last year's levy. Above that number is 9,140,490. That is the current levy with the current numbers. Our levy ceiling?
Excuse me.
Yes.
Comment by meeting 2025?
2025.
Okay, thank you.
The levy ceiling allowed by Massachusetts Department of Revenue is 2.5% of our entire taxable value. That comes out to 20,568,160. That is our maximum allowed ceiling. New revenue growth, which are things like permits, growth, construction additions, pools, decks, that kind of item, has raised 78,823. For this year, there was no amended new growth.
Stephen, where were you looking at that? Maybe I'm looking at a different number.
Same page. Page three, under Terminology.
Oh, I'm in Terminology. Okay, I'm sorry. I was looking down below.
All those same numbers transfer down there, so it's not a bad place to be.
Okay, but the two numbers on new growth are different. So new growth revenue in paragraph form is 78,823. New growth down below is 79,823. I guess it's a thousand off, but it's still a different number.
Well, that's a calculation for Hubbard's for 2026?
No, they should be the same number.
They should be the same number?
Oh, yes, I see what you're saying, yes.
Which, hold the real number, please stand up.
Is that a typo?
Obviously.
It's obviously a typo.
Yeah.
See, it was reported to Department of Revenue.
Thanks. I know you guys have been working really hard on this and trying to get everything together for tonight, so I imagine things are a little rushed this morning, trying to get those finalized numbers in so we can set the tax rate.
Been a fun day, yes.
I can only imagine.
Give me a second.
No worries, we'll.
You're not going?
We're not going anywhere. Don't you fret none.
KP, you still there, right?
Still here, I'm looking at what you're looking at, $1,000 delta.
Awesome, on the same page. I like it.
Yay.
Is that me? I gotta get the right form. I've been through it, yeah.
They're all the same.
Yeah, I know, it's all blurring together.
79,823.
All right, so the.
So the bottom number is correct.
79, okay, so down here.
Thanks, Stephen.
Sorry for the delay.
No.
Because I would have thrown off all these numbers.
We're happy to wait for answers.
Okay, so working our way down to the bottom, you're going to see the 8,765,054 follow through again. We're adding the allowed, 2.5% allowed by DOR, the 219,126. We're adding the new growth in. It comes up with the current levy limit, and then we have a debt exclusion, which was the school roof voted several years ago. allowable levy, 9,146,380. We take that number and we put it into the calculations, as we'll get to in the next page, two pages actually. The page you're looking at now, which is the third page, valuations used, there's an LA4 at the very, very top of the page, that is what's reported to the Department of Revenue. Those are all the classifications broken down. The entire town valuation, 822,725,397. I said that wrong. That number is basically taken and calculated as a single tax rate potential. If you look at the graph at the bottom, valuations by class before the tax shift, 92.6% of the entire town taxable value is residential, 7.35% is left over for commercial, industrial, personal property, and chapter land. And when we're talking about a shift, those are the four items that would be caught in a shift. Shifting the tax burden, should you choose to do that, is the very small print, unfortunately.
That's the next page.
I'll have to get that grown up.
This one right here?
Yes.
Okay.
At the very bottom of that, there was supposed to be a highlight, I don't know if it came out on your forms.
There is.
40%.
The third box over, the very bottom in yellow, the first column is the residential. That shows a tax rate of $10.75, should you want to do a split. The commercial, industrial, personal property, and chapter land would bump up to $15.67 for a rate. If you choose to keep a single rate, it factors to $11.11, which is a reduction from last year. Funny number. And the reason we can do that is because valuations won out. The last page, the tax impacts, 2025, it was a 412,412,200 valuation with an average tax, 4,754. This is projecting out at an average valuation of 442,500, and it bumps the taxes up $162 per property across the entire package, 4,916 for a $162 bump on average. Earlier today, the Board of Assessors has met, and they decided and voted to keep it as a single tax rate, just because we don't have the commercial industrial infrastructure to support a split at this time. So they have approved a one tax rate at 11.11, subject to your approval.
Does anyone on the Board have any questions?
No.
Yes, please. Stephen, can you just explain for folks who are either here with us tonight or who might watch this a little bit later, what this, you know, you captured a little bit about the average increase, but can you just spend a moment to explain that the tax rate does not, tax rate going down does not mean their taxes are going down, and how all that plays in, as well as, you know, how we kind of compare to some of our communities surrounding us?
There is a town budget, obviously, that we need to maintain. All properties in town have to share in that tax liability and burden. So the state makes us look at this as an example every year from a commercial, industrial, personal property, and splitting it so that some factors of the industry can take on a bigger burden than the residential. Bigger towns, they certainly take advantage of that. Smaller towns don't have that ability. They just, we'd put businesses out of business by raising it too much and too aggressively. The budget is the budget, so the rate can come down, but valuations are creeping up every year, so it offsets to a point. And our goal here isn't to make money for the town, our goal is to pay the bills. So we're not looking to go any higher than we need to be for any specific reason, that's what Proposition 2.5 and overrides that. So our debt burdens within that one split, should you choose to do that.
Excellent. And then, next question for you, Stephen. So our new growth number this year, how is, have you had an opportunity to look at how our new growth number is comparing to the last couple of years?
The growth numbers are down this year, and that's because of the transition from Permit.gov. We had a software package that we no longer have. We went into a new built package for permits, so we're not able to track it as aggressively. The numbers didn't transfer correctly, there's gaps from A to B, basically.
Do we just face some amended new growth?
I definitely, I definitely have some amended new growth in process. The new system is very, very friendly to me, because assessors have always been out of that loop. The new system that's currently designed, every time a permit is pulled, I get notification that a permit is pulled, I will have map and lock property address and what's supposed to be going on. And when they close a permit, I will get notified that this permit was closed as well. So it's immediate, it's easy to capture, it's easy to track. So as those permits that were pulled during the mix-up and crossover of software comes in, I will be notified instantly to close that gap.
Okay. And does this account for our newest exclusions, the ones we just voted, or?
This does not, and that was the delay. I've been trying to get that processed. It comes from the financial side, so those three new exclusions are not in this projection.
Okay, so those will be affecting FY '27 budget?
Yes.
So people who are watching this at home and are like, hey, okay, this is the end result of that vote, that piece hasn't been pulled into play yet.
Correct. I cannot process my numbers without them documenting on the state site the debt exclusion Form 1, and that's what they put in, so they're not prepared or they haven't loaded it on their end, which allows me to move on tonight.
But the roof has gone in, so.
But the roof is there, the roof one is there.
The school roof.
The school roof, correct. But the remaining three, we're voting on in June.
Can we just remind the people at home what the current debt exclusions are?
So I think this very, this exclusion that Stephen's talking about that's currently in play right now and impacting the tax rate, the only one impacting is the school roof.
School roof, correct.
None of the new votes.
So it's still?
Correct.
Correct.
So none of the, yeah, the biotron.
So it's the school roof that we excluded a few years ago that we're still paying off through the budget, but none of the new ones have been added into the 2026 budget?
That's correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Thank you.
No.
Good. To the point you made earlier, and I happen to agree, and I think the Board does on this, being a small town and only having 7.3% commercial, it would be doing them more harm, even though it might lower us.
Oh, get, no, they would totally be hosed.
Right, so that.
It would be 100% the resident.
Yeah.
The other piece, too, is we have a lot of chapter land, and that would affect them as well.
Right, absolutely. So, I mean, I totally agree with how the Board of Assessors voted for that, okay. And are any other questions? Are there any questions from anyone out here on this? Okay, seeing none, I need to read this for the record, and we'll also be in the footage later after that into a form of a motion. The Hubbard's and Select Board votes in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, as amended, the percentage of local tax levy which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the fiscal year 2026 tax rates, and set the residential factor at 1.000, with a corresponding CIP shift of 1.000, pending certification of the town's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made on second. Any questions or further discussion? Okay, is the roll?
Roll call.
Yeah, roll call, vote. Peter?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Nellie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff? Yes. Motion is passed. Thank you very much, Mr. Select.
No.
It wasn't bad.
It hurts. It hurts you, yes.
It hurts me.
Trust me, I don't like it either. I don't like paying more taxes.
I'd like to know how many average homes there are in town.
Well, it's across the board average. That's the average of the middle, so there's ones lower. There's ones lower than that, Peter.
Ready when you are.
All right. Next, we will move to the.
Hate fucking town.
Joint appointment with the Board of Health for the vacancy. We have Mr. Rogers, thank you, and Mr. Connolly. Thank you, welcome both of you. At this point, we'll open up the discussion for Kathy and you gentlemen, who certainly have a chance to speak before us, if you will. Once it comes down to, the discussion's over, the vote will be by the Board owner. Okay, all right, so Kathy.
Jeff, before you do that, Kathy, did you, do you have a quorum of your Board? Do you want to call yourselves to order?
I'll do that from there, okay. Give me a minute.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kathy.
And the scrape bleach.
Don't do that.
Just disinfect everything.
Hi, Kathy Hansgate, Chair of the Board of Health. We do have a quorum of members here, including Gayle and Judy and myself, and so I therefore called the Board of Health meeting to order at 6:56 PM in conjunction with the Select The point of discussion for tonight is an open slot on the Board of Health, for which we hope that the Select Board will make an appointment this evening to have, fill that. Some time ago, back in August, it was announced that there was openings, and we received an application from Mr. Connolly, and then there was some technical difficulties in the legitimacy of how this was organized, and so we postponed any votes. And during that time, Mr. David Rogers also came forth to be appointed to the Board. Dave has come to each and every meeting from that point on, when he was invited, and he has expressed that he would like to be appointed to the Board, and he also filled in the application as well. Mr. Connolly was notified of meeting, the first meeting before the Select Board, when it was all postponed. He has never come to any meetings. He has never participated in anything. Mr. Rogers automatically volunteered because he works down near Worcester to pick up a granted AED that we had gotten, because it was easy for him to do, so he's already stepped up to the plate to be an active potential member. I'm sorry, Mr. Connolly, but we haven't seen or heard from you, and for that reason, the Board of Health would recommend Mr. David Rogers for the position.
Thank you, Kathy. Would either of you gentlemen like to speak before us at all?
Congratulations. I'd like to congratulate someone. Yeah, I'll just introduce myself. My name is David Rogers, live over on Williamsburg Road. I was made aware of the Board of Health opening position, and I've been coaching in town for a while, and figured I'd get more involved in some town activities. So I attended some of the meetings, and with my background, it kind of was fitting. I'm in 20 years in biotech, and the last three years in like a quality assurance position. Just looking at what they do during the Board of Health meetings, it kind of fits the role. I am detail reviewing, you know, permits and such, so it's kind of just transitioned from my, you know, my professional life into helping out the town where I could. That's really it. Thank you, thanks for the opportunity.
Anyone on the Board have any questions for either of them?
Chris?
Does Steve want to speak? No? Okay, all right. I just want to make sure you have an option.
Oh, I guess, is Davis, is Davis the only applicant there?
No, no.
We have David Rogers, who just spoke a moment ago. He said he lived on Williamsburg Road, he was made aware of the position, spent coaching in town for a while, wanted to get more involved in town activities, spent 20 years in biotech, last few in quality assurance position. He feels he's a good fit for the role, and he's had some work on details, reviewing the permits and such. Jeff offered Mr. Connolly the opportunity to speak, he's also here with us, and he declined to stand up and speak.
Okay, well, I appreciate that recap that I did hear. I did hear Davis speak, and Mr. Connolly is there, but he chooses not to speak.
Correct. Correct. It's David, not Davis, but we can change his name later.
Oh, I'm sorry, it says Davis in my tag. I apologize, David.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I have.
All right. I'd like to just simply say to Mr. Connolly, I was very impressed by your credentials and all of your experience. Thank you for your service. Somewhat unexpectedly, when I was trying to download your initial just application on my printer at home, and I printed it, and the printer wouldn't stop. I had to shut it off after 45-plus pages of everything that you've ever done, but I did look at them, and I again thank you for your service. All right, there's nothing else on the Board in the form of a motion? Could we have a motion for whomever you would, at this point, like to award the vacancy to?
Jeff, before we do that, do you want to just explain to the public how we're voting? Because it's a little bit different than what we've done.
I mean, why, yeah. Reason we're here, first of all, we had to have a continuance last week, and the reason we're here is there was a question on the legal way in which to determine who the person would be to fill the vacancy. The legal technicality, and we checked with our legal people on this, basically centers around just one particular aspect, and that is, once a vacancy occurs, the Chapter 292 of the Acts of 2012, Paragraph 11 process, after you go through the legalese, it comes down to the very fact that, once a vacancy occurs, Paragraph 11 requires that the Board's remaining members shall be given written notice thereof within one month of the said vacancy to the selectmen. The selectmen shall then fill such vacancy. If such a Board fails to give said notice within the time herein specified, the General Court in 1971 added requirement that the Select Board fill the vacancy on its own if the remaining members of the Board with the vacancy fail to give timely notice. In 1976, the Supreme Judicial Court held in a case involving the elected Tisbury Board of Water Commissioners, that under General Law, Chapter 41, Paragraph 11, if no notice of vacancy on a Board of two or more members is given by the remaining member or members within one month of the vacancy, this is underlined, the selectmen alone must fill vacancy. And that is how we are functioning tonight, based on that explanation and the general laws from our legal. And I spoke to Kathy earlier today, so she'd be aware of that. That being the case, could I have a motion?
I would make a motion to put forward David Rogers due to the fact that the Board of Health wants, or has inclined to show that they would like him. And I would also like to say, Steve, please apply to another Board. Please, like, I don't want to, like, I just, I hate to see two people that actually want to be on one spot, and there's so many Boards and vacancies out there that you have a very lovely, like Jeff said, resume on, please apply to something else. I don't want to, I don't want to discourage you against anything, please. I'm not picking sides, because I don't know either one of you from a hole in the wall, and that's the only reason why I'm putting forth is because of the Board of Health. I would please encourage you to please apply to something else.
It was a rather convoluted process, I was, was playing.
And that's, that's fine, yeah.
You just hinted at it, but it was a crazy.
Yeah, I think this whole thing got a little kind of screwed up, and I'm not going to lie, it probably did. And again, David has met with the Board and gone to the Board, and they feel comfortable with him, and that's fine and great, please apply. We have, we have lots of different seats open, and please, come to something else. We will, we will gladly take you out of what suits you on a different, you know, like to put you in a place that, we'll find, there's plenty. So anyway, okay, that's my motion.
You have an incredible background.
That's really long, sorry.
Can I make a friendly amendment to that?
Sure.
Go with appoint David Rogers?
Yes, just simplify it, please.
To fill the Board of Health vacancy until the next election?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, motion's made, and second, any further discussion, questions? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote on this. Peter?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Katie?
Yes.
Nellie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes, David Rogers.
Okay, Jeff, David Rogers. We thank you very much.
Thank you, both of you gentlemen, I appreciate your time coming, please, thank you. I appreciate your time coming, and please, thank you.
Matters not recently, is this...
Yes, I'm waiting for people to leave.
Just want to make sure.
Apparently, they all leaving. What if they stay?
Need us for anything else?
No, thank you.
Entertainment purposes, but that's on, all right.
That's why I was waiting, I think.
I guess we adjourn?
Oh, yeah.
If you'd like to, I will make a note.
I appreciate you adjourned us.
And the Board of Health is adjourning on the next session. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, before we...
It is seven o'clock.
Before we end ourselves, I have a couple of things to inform you on under matters not reasonably expected. First of all, I'd like to pull you in on who we are with the Building Commissioner, Duffy. He will be presented to the board officially on December 1st as an interim. He has surgery scheduled for December 16th.
Okay.
So we will plan coverage accordingly and revisit the long-term planning after that. To this date, we have no applicants for the position.
I'm almost shocked.
Because I've seen some emails that have come to me wondering what's going on with the Building Commissioner. That's the spot we're in, but that's...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't make out what you're saying. Can you speak louder or repeat what you just said?
Can I paraphrase, is that okay?
Yeah, please.
So Jeff was giving some updates on some of the open vacancies, and the first one we started with was the Building Commissioner. So as we may recall, Dave's last day is actually November 28th. Duffy, who was on as previously as our Building Commissioner, and he's currently still the alternate, he's going to stay on, and the plan is for on December 1st that the board actually have before us the official appointment to make him the interim Building Commissioner. So we have someone in place as we move forward. We're still going to have to have a backup for that, though, because he is going out on surgery the middle of December, and currently, we have no applications for the position to date.
Thank you.
Do you want me to do that one?
What we talked about?
Yep, you want me to talk about that one?
Yeah, I'm sorry, making it a priority.
I would love to do that, all right. So then the next position to update folks on real quick is the Treasurer Collector piece. So I spoke with Nate, and I believe Jeff also spoke with Nate today, and Nate's currently working remote. He thought he could use some assistance. I think he sent the board an email. Did he send everyone?
Nope.
Oh, of course he did, okay, that's okay. Well, forward it to everybody, I thought it did go to everybody. He sends an email asking for some assistance with filling some of these positions, and in particular, the Treasurer Collector position is a priority. As we know, Mary's last day, or as we may recall, but I have these dates memorized, her last day is December 4th.
Right.
It's coming up quite fast. We still have quite a lot of things in play. We're still trying to wrap up our FY25 books. We're still looking at, you know, now that we've done the tax repairing, we have to get our bills out and so forth. So there's a lot of things happening, and the Treasurer Collector position is a very important one for any community, particularly ours. So it's something, you know, we've, we've already prioritized in making sure that Nate got everything posted right away, and he did a great job getting that posted the day after our last meeting. We have applications in, so he wanted to get the process started. So I went back and forth with Nate on this. I know Jeff went back and forth with Nate on this as well about looking at how we can best assist him with getting this position filled. And the thought process was to initially have kind of an advisory capacity where there was the two people in the Treasurer Collector's office, Mary, who's the outgoing Treasurer Collector, and Sarah, who is the Assistant Treasurer Collector, sitting with one of the, a Select Board member for the initial round in person, and start looking at applications tomorrow to screen them and start interviewing them early next week. And then with their recommendation, likely for Mary putting something in writing to go to Nate with his recommendation of who the second rounds should be, then it could be Nate as well as two Select Board members, and that round can be remote, so we can accommodate Nate's remote schedule. And then we can give them a little assistance, too, with looking at stuff and being able to help out. So the idea would be to fill the Treasurer Collector position first, and then move on to the next one, which is the Executive Assistant. Because the Treasurer Collector one, you know, you figure most people are going to give at least two weeks' notice if we can find someone. And if we can't find someone, then we need to find what we're going to, you know, Nate's going to have to work hard to figure out what he's going to do in the meantime, because we can't go without Treasurer Collector.
Correct.
I've also given Mary the permission to do what she has to do and the extra help that she's needing just to get the 2025 books brought up as far as she can. So that's in, in process, because that is very important to take care of.
So going back to the Treasurer Collector one, Jeff, because I think Peter has a question on two. I think what Nate's looking for is three Select Board members, one...
About what we...
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
For the Treasurer Collector, on round one, require one Select Board person. Peter, I'd like you to do that, if you would.
Yeah, no problem.
It'll be, it'll be conducted in person by Mary, Sarah, and you.
Sounds good. Give me a date.
For round two, Katie, it'll be you and I.
Okay.
Because Chris is working and not available.
And that's fine.
Okay? So, and, and that, and round two, that will be you and I along with Nate.
Yes.
Along with Nate, okay?
And it's just important to make sure that no one talks to round one person, doesn't talk to round two people.
Okay.
For the board.
Okay.
Because essentially, round one acts as an advisory capacity...
Towards, yeah.
To Nate.
Yeah.
Independently, and then the two members of the board are sitting with Nate.
Okay.
And just so everyone knows, in case people are wondering why I'm not more involved in that, I know one of the candidates. So I'm recusing myself out of the process.
All right.
And then KP, the assumption was that you had a busy work schedule, so we didn't think you'd be available, is that correct?
Yeah.
Not during the day, that is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Have one more item, and then we'll end for the evening.
I have one question.
Oh, go ahead, let's take that first.
Where are we at with accountant? Town accountant?
I can update that if you want.
Because Sam is still...
Yeah, I spend a lot of time on this subject.
Yeah, I know. I just want to know where we're at, if we're ready to...
So, so we currently have an accountant that's been working with us for a while, and that's Sam.
Yeah.
And she's been struggling a little bit with taking over the books of what she inherited from some, a former accountant, right? Mary said everything looks good. The problem is, is that sometimes, you know, with the notes and so forth, you don't necessarily interpret correctly what someone else did. So everything's there, but there's a missing piece that we're not able to amend. So the idea was that, because it's taking so much time, and we are having trouble closing the 25 books, and that holds up free cash certification, holds up closing the books, it also holds up being able to call the others, and, and have a conversation with Nate. I think most people probably had a conversation with Nate about the importance of maybe bringing in an outside accountant, and that's something him and Mary had spoke about quite a bit as well. They were able to find an individual who actually works in another community. She's got a lot of experience. You know, the idea is someone who's a little bit more experienced might be able to come in and try to figure some of that out. I talked to Nate, he thought he had some funds within the system that he was still good with, even in the accountant line, that he could work from. But otherwise, you know, Mary, I believe, did send an email over to Seth, who's the Chair of the FinCom, so that he knows he might have to go for a reserve fund transfer. And everyone's kind of been apprised of that. So that's the notion for FY25. FY26, we're currently in, we still have some, a little bit of issues, as I understand it from Mary, on some of the numbers for certain departments, particularly if they have, like, revolving funds or monies that roll over from year to year, not the general fund, but other pieces, where there's some glitch, not so much glitch, but the number's not perfect, right? They're trying to figure out what those pieces are to get everyone's numbers to match. That being said, that should hopefully be resolved by bringing in the outside person, because if you clean up 25, then it rolls into 26, which needs her. In 26, Sam, our current accountant, is still doing a lot of work. There was some discussion with her earlier on where I don't know if this is going to be a long-term fit for her. I think she's got a lot going on, and this may not be perfect. So the idea is, you know, if she does want to step away, then we're going to have to look at filling that position as well. But right now, the first order business is trying to get the, the other person whose name is currently escaping me in as the outside consultant...
Accountant, yes, a consultant.
To be able to help out. And I think that's usually a decision Nate's able to generally make.
All right, so we have...
So we don't have to do anything on that.
And Nate also indicated it.
On that one.
So he's on top of that?
He's on top of that vote today. And Jeff reached out to Mary as well.
Because I, I'm more nervous about her than Mary's job personally. That's what I'm nervous about.
The consultants is the most important right now because we're trying, that's to help Mary...
Correct.
Before she leaves.
Get to where she needs to go.
And what Nate is also putting forth for the future is a possible, according to regional partnership, to stabilize the function long-term.
Okay.
It's just regional, but that's something that we would be discussing later on.
So I don't need to lose sleep tonight? Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then I have just one other informational...
Problems for another day, dear, don't worry.
And then the Executive Assistant, but that's, hopefully, we got a Treasurer Collector rolling, and then we can move on from that.
Yeah.
Have, just one more question. Have any apps come in for that position? Applications?
I don't know the answer to that.
No.
I know we've got some for the Treasurer Collector. We've got at least a handful, standing against.
And we felt that that was a priority.
Oh, God, oh, God, yes, yeah.
The others, we'll have to wait on them.
Yeah, we can stick you up there as the Administrative Assistant for now.
Because he's got so much internet skills, I can't even tell you.
I think Jeff asked him for a raise.
All right, thank you.
I have one more thing, which is more informational update for you, because this has already been approved by me. Just to let you know, in the form of an emergency, once again, we're having plumbing problems at the Meeting House, okay? The well tank, the pump control switch, water heater, and the insulating of the piping in the crawl space, none of which have any insulation, all need to be done. And the cost quote right now for this, and I locate it, is $7,845.